Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. City Council meeting will now come to order. First on the agenda is the invocation and pledge.
Join me in your prayer. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come here and do the business of the city. We also just want to be reminded of those who are mourning tragic loss in our community today, and as we think of them and think of their families, we ask that you would come with them and put your arms around them and love them, and be with the fed and care family as they are there through this time. Lord, help us now. Go with us and with those who weren't able to be here tonight, watch over them. Thank you for those that are here, and may you give us wisdom and knowledge as we do the business of the city, and it's in your name we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Drake, roll call.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taff Brandon, Ward 6.
Okay. You have got your package in the mail. You have a chance to look over the minutes of any questions or discussion. If not, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number two, natural gas rates.
Mayor Protem, this is my second reading of updating some of our gas rates by adding some pass-throughs and also adding a special contract rate for some of the large industries that are coming in to the community in the future. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Comments or discussion? Motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number three is a first reading.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilman Sayah. This is a minor amendment to the alcohol ordinance. Several categories of alcohol sales require that they report at the third quarter that their sales versus alcohol sales. With that, it didn't include the fourth quarter or the winter quarter, which does provide for a true reflection of what their sales are for that year. With that, proposed amendment was made and Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval, including the fourth quarter in that report. The fourth quarter will be from the previous year because the reporting is needed to be done at the end of the third quarter so we can reflect it on the next year's licensing.
All the questions? This is the first reading, and we'll take it up on the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Number four.
Thank you again. There are four members of our Board of Zoning Appeals whose terms are expiring next month. Ward 1 member Kevin McKelley, Ward 3 member Patrick Murphy, Ward 4 member Malcolm Cooley, Ward 5 member Linda Brunt. With that, they are all willing to continue to serve if reappointed, and with that, we did poll all of them. They would all like to continue to serve.
If there's any comments. If not, there's a motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the four members, current members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. This is our annual memorandum of understanding with the Department of Community Affairs. They are the entity that oversees the Georgia Main Street program, and this is just acknowledging our continuing year as accredited Georgia Main Street community. I would like to point out that we have been accredited 36 years, and that is out of 38 that this program has been in the state of Georgia, so we're proud of that.
Standing. Any comments? There's a motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, lady. Item number six.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Before you, on the screen here, you'll see the localized floodplain mapping in downtown Cartersville. We are, we have contacted Bard's Design Solutions to give us a proposal to perform a flood study in this area to help fine tune the limited detail flood study that we already have there. Because it's limited, there were items that were not picked up that we feel like will help better define this location. This agreement will, they will provide both field work and engineering to create such a document for us. This agreement is for $51,300, and Public Works is planning on utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA funds for this project. In order to qualify these funds, we feel that this project would help our stormwater division to manage, reduce, and recapture stormwater drainage in the future based on identifying flood areas in the downtown area. Therefore, this project will meet the requirements and eligibility of the ARPA funds. This is not a budgeted item, but once again, we will be utilizing ARPA funds for this. Public Works recommends approval of this agreement.
Comments or discussions? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, second amendment to development agreement. Jackson Farms.
Yes, Mayor Protem. This is amending the agreement where y'all gave Jackson Farms an extension. They only listed one of the property owners in that agreement, and this is adding the second property owner to it. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Comments or questions? If not, a motion's on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, satisfaction and release of extension agreement.
Yes, Mayor Protem. Great Valley Commerce Center LLC entered into an agreement with the city regarding some gas line extensions. There are some obligations and assurances in there. However, the project is now complete. They've met all their obligations, so they've asked us to enter into this satisfaction and release of the extension agreement. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Comments or questions? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve the agreement. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine, approving plans of finance and revenue bond.
Yes, Mayor Protem. The Bartow-Cartersville Joint Development Authority and Homewalk Q Sales USA, Inc. are planning to do up to $750 million of private activity bonds under Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code. These bonds are for wastewater and solid waste treatment, and by doing them, they are eligible for certain tax breaks and grants and other things for the project. It does not affect the rest of the project. There is no obligation by the city, county, or authority related to these bonds. It will all be private activity and either bought by Homewalk internally, or they will sell them on the open market as they determine. It is recommended for your approval. A TEPRA hearing was held earlier today at Boyd Pettit's office. The Joint Development Authority approved it Tuesday at their meeting, and if y'all approve tonight, the commissioner will approve at his meeting next Wednesday.
Comments or questions? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Item number 10.
Yes, Mayor Protem. This is the first amendment to real estate sales and purchase agreement for 178 West Main Street. Current Barry Henderson, the current individual interested in purchasing that, has had 90 days on most due diligence. He's asked for additional 60 days. They are making progress. They have met with the planning department, shared their initial plans. They are doing some site work. They've done soil boring and everything else to kind of make sure the site's going to work out for them. I did speak to Mr. Henderson last Friday, just to kind of see where they're at in the process, and they do feel they're going to be able to move forward 100%, but they do need a little more time, so I do recommend approval of the 60-day extension.
Questions or comments? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Item number 11, City Cartersville branding.
Yes, sir. This is a contract to partner with Doug Chatham Design Studio on a citywide rebranding project, which aims to establish a new brand identity package for the city of Cartersville. As Councilman Roth had pointed out earlier, Ms. Penny and those before me had already made a big step in the creative approach to the city's identity, so we want to kind of take that effort through a thorough branding process to provide a consistent look and strong messaging to resonate with both citizens and visitors. The services offered totaled $12,500, and we request your approval to enter this contract.
This is something that was shared at the work session last meeting. I think it's a good idea that Logan's brought forward. I do appreciate his input, and I think his expertise and the gentleman we're going to be using would be helpful to move this forward. And it's been at least 10 years or more since we kind of had the "be charmed, be prosperous, be long" tagline, and we're going to look at adding another branding, you know, other logos citywide, so I do recommend this reapproval.
Questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 12, second amendment to solar power project.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Here with the second amendment to our solar power purchasing contract with Meek Power. The second amendment adds some language in there that actually will slightly raise the price of the kilowatt hour cost, the unit pricing coming out of the unit, and also adds some language in there that will lower the cost based on the deal they get on the solar panels as part of the installation. City Attorney Keith did review the contract and had no issues with it, and even though it is going up, it's still one of, if not the cheapest source of power on our system even still, so we do request approval.
Questions or comments? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. You got the next one, Derek?
Yes, sir. This next one is an order of transformers we needed to serve the Homewalk project. I think the item summary had a typo in it, had the price listed at $68,000 or something. The actual price requested for the transformers was $61,226, and there was four transformers that size needed for the project. This was a huge savings. All the other bids we got were around $30,000 more, so we were very excited to get this one in like a 16-week turnaround time. This is a budgeted expense coming into upcoming budget, and we do request your approval.
Questions or comments? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry fully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Item number 14.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. FiberCom is requesting the approval to pay Brander Group Incorporated $42,496 for a block of 1,024 IP addresses. These IP addresses will be used to assign to future FiberCom customers for delivery of our internet service, and these are to supplement the current block of IP addresses that we have that are nearly exhausted after five years. This is not a budgeted item, but the funds are available.
Questions or comments? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Thank you. Item number 15, truck purchase.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Protem and Council, we come before you tonight requesting to purchase five vehicles for a total cost of $209,035. These five vehicles, one will be for planning and development, three will be for our gas system, and one will be for the electric department. As you know, the last couple of months, we've had a difficult time being able to purchase these vehicles, whether it's F-150 or 250. We had an opportunity to get these, and these are 2023 F-150 Supercap four-wheel drives. We're asking for your permission to purchase those out of each one of those departmental funds.
Questions or comments? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 16, track steer loader.
Good afternoon. I'm here looking for approval to purchase a track steer loader from Franklin Tractor Company. It is a New Holland C345 with a safety glass door. We did attain three other quotes. This was not the lowest, but we do ask for, based on the design of the machine and the safety features, we figured we felt like the New Holland was a little bit better for us. And so, we ask for your approval for $88,632.
Recommend y'all approve that as the best, lowest qualified bid, or lowest best qualified bid.
So, there's a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve as the best, lowest qualified bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Thank you, Steve. Item number 17, have a few more. Send it.
Send it, sir.
Sorry about that. They showed up on my desk, too. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem and Council. The first item is repair and replacement stock for our water system. We requested bids. The low bid was Core &amp; Main for $22,995. This is budgeted maintenance expense. Request your approval.
Questions or comments? Motion to?
Make a motion. I make a motion to approve the purchase. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Carrie, you have it.
Yes, sir. The next item is watershed protection plan monitoring. This is something that is required of the water department due to our current NPDS discharge permit at the wastewater plant. We're required to monitor streams, water quality in our watershed. Rent Engineering has historically done this for us, and they also do the watershed monitoring for the MS4 stormwater permit in the city as well, so that these samples sort of overlap between the water department and Public Works. I recommend approval of this contract for $59,500. It is a budgeted expense.
Questions or comment? If not, a motion's on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Thank you, sir.
The next one's the task order from Switzer Engineering for the Grassdale Road water main relocation engineering. The first task order that you approved for that did not include the bid phase of the project. This task order is simply for that bid phase for not to exceed cost of $30,000. Recommended for your approval.
Questions or comments? If not, a motion's on the floor.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
The next is altitude valve replacement engineering. This is also from Switzer Engineering. They're requesting to design the altitude valve replacement on two of our water storage tanks. The purpose of this is to be able to slightly increase the pressure within the city to push water to the furthest extent of our water system in anticipation of higher demands from industry on the Bartow County's water system. It is recommended for your approval. It is budgeted in the next fiscal year budget.
Questions or comments? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
All right, only three more.
Move it along.
The overlooked gravity sewer engineering. This is replacing approximately 2,100 feet of 12-inch gravity sewer and replacing a current lift station at the overlooked parkway east of I-75. The current sewer system on that site is inadequate to serve the amount of residential development that is happening there. We're requesting a not-to-exceed price of $80,000 to design that gravity sewer from Switzer Engineering. It is also budgeted in the next fiscal year budget.
Questions or comments? If not, a motion's on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
All right. The next one involves the same area overlooked parkway lift station. This is what will be on the end of that gravity sewer. We'll have to pump it up over the hill. It actually pumps all the way to Center Road. It replaces an existing sewer lift station, but this one will be sized appropriately to serve the entire drainage basin on that side of I-75 at Main Street. We're requesting you to approve a not-to-exceed price of $103,000 for that design from Switzer Engineering. This is also budgeted in the next fiscal year budget, and it will be paid from sewer capacity fee revenue.
Questions or comments? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
All right, my final item. The west side water tank site survey. This is a site for a water tank to be located on the west side of the city in the city's water distribution system in conjunction with a new west side feeder main or 36-inch water line that's going over there. This proposal is for surveying the proposed tank location site, including topographical, geotechnical, access easement requirements, and hydraulic modeling for that, for not to exceed price of $41,000. This is also included in the next fiscal year budget. Recommended for your approval.
There we go. Questions or comments?
So, I probably should have asked this earlier, and I don't know if you can say this, where the location of it, have we determined that, or is that what this is?
This is part of it. It's Burnt Hickory Road area.
Thank you. Not Wellington?
Excuse me?
Not Wellington? We got it, Phil. Well, we'll wait until the survey says.
Survey says, a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, city. And we have four items to add to the agenda. You have the motion on the floor to add to that.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
The first item is the purchase of 115 Woodland Drive for the installation of a detention pond to help the drainage in that particular area. It is also going to be purchased with ARPA funds, and the project has been determined to be of great benefit to the city's stormwater drainage basin in that particular area, and all the ARPA requirements have been reviewed and approved and met by the Public Works Director. The purchase price is $427,880.50. After credits and charges between the two parties, the city will actually be paying, will receiving a credit of $1,228.20. So, the final purchase price will be $426,652.30. In addition with this, you will be approving a post-occupancy agreement as the individual we are buying the property from wishes to be able to remain through the end of school and to coincide moving out with the purchase of his new home. And I will recommend approval of the post-occupancy agreement and the settlement agreement and the purchase of the property, and that can all be done in one motion.
Questions or comments? All discussions?
Does a motion to approve work? Yes, it does. Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Steve, you have the next one.
I didn't expect you to.
I'm looking for approval of an RFP for the building at the sports complex located at 11 Sugar Valley Road. We received bids on May 3rd. We did have a clarification process where they were able to adjust their price, and it is recommended by Parks and Recreation Director to accept the low bid of ground construction of $117,0112.
Questions or discussions? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Dan, you have the next one.
Yes, sir. This is Mayor Protem. This is two items, two agreements that the mayor and councilmen requested to approve, two separate agreements but similar. So, Pine Grove Acquisitions Dirt Agreement is one where the adjacent property across from Dockberry Road from the Water Admin Building is looking to use our excess dirt on our city site to help them on their parcel, which is more convenient to them. They're looking for that agreement. They will not interfere with our Water Admin Building. Right now, as I shared earlier, we won't need this dirt at this point in time for city purposes, but we want to kind of keep that option open. So, we've entered, the second agreement would be entering with the Cummings property adjacent to our parcel there, so it gives us three years if we need to acquire that dirt. We would obviously have to pay the hauling costs and everything, the removal costs, but it would not cost us the dirt itself, and I recommend approval of both those dirt agreements.
Questions or comments on these two items? If not, there's a motion on the floor.
Is it both items at the same time?
You can.
You can, if you'd like. Yes. Make a motion to approve both items. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. That concludes. I know we have one more item to cover, one of the most important ones. Forgive me. Mr. Ryan Harg, you have the floor.
Go ahead, Sir Chris. You almost forgot me, didn't you? I'm, uh, Mayor Protem and Council. Tonight, we'll be looking at the financial report for March 2023 and comparing to March 2022. In the general fund, revenues increased from March of last year by $6.8 million, and the expenses decreased by $474,000. Areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis are local option sales tax. Have an increase there of about $1.4 million. Billing permits and inspection fees have increased there of about $315,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last March by $4.6 million. Expenses increased by $172,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last year by $9.5 million. Expenses increased by $7.5 million due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase of gas, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increases to the transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $5.6 million. Expenses increased by $4 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase of electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues increased over last year by $32,000. Expenses increased by $14,000 due to increased personnel expenses and decreased operating expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by $378,000. While the expenses decreased by $21,000, this is due to increased personnel expenses and decreased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber objects fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.1 million. Expenses increased by $146,000 due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Our cash position for March 2023, total unrestricted cash balances increased, total restricted cash balances also increased. SPOS fund balances, SPOS 2003 has a balance of $28,558.13. SPOS 2014 has a balance of $231,991.10. SPOS 2020 balance is $9,453,158.86.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd just like to say thank Tom, and obviously, this is nine months through the fiscal year. You can see that we're trending very well. We continue to monitor all those. Obviously, the mayor... Obviously, the mayor likes to point out that our natural gas costs, electric costs have risen, and we pass those costs on to our customers. We try to keep our rates affordable. The electric system, we keep, continue to wait on the nuclear plant to come online, which will help us to get cheaper electricity in the future, but it's additional costs and no cost overruns that we're trying to bear. Continue to watch that fund, but overall, we're doing very well throughout the city in these different funds.
Thank you.
That concludes our council's agenda. Is there anyone that'd like to speak to the council tonight? Step forward, give your name, address to the clerk.
My name is David Holt, and I live at two eighteen West Avenue, Cartersville, Georgia. Two questions, because I'm, I'm thinking about spending a bunch of money. See, I need to, I need to get a solid answer on what is the date? Because I've been here a long time, and I've never heard a lot about SPOSS funds and getting a quiet zone on this railroad track. And every day, my good buddy tells me it'd be next year, it'd be next year, it'd be next year. And I want to invest money, but I'm not going to invest money as long as this is the only place, from Atlanta to Chattanooga, they still honk the horn. And we have a noise ordinance in town that we don't enforce it. The trucks, you know, y'all know what I own. The horns, the rednecks, the whatever, the thumping music, it's not enforced. I have a place in Rome. It's very well enforced. And I'd like to know what you're going to do about it to quiet this city down and make it, if I want to spend ten million dollars, I want to know I'm going to get a return on my investment. So when are we going to quiet this down? We've talked about it. We're the last place on the whole line that doesn't have a quiet zone, and I want to know when we're going to get a firm date.
We don't have, I'll tell you honestly, we don't have a firm date. I keep asking Wade Wilson, who's working with our consultant, but I just, I'll be honest with you, David, because I keep asking the same question. But it's CSX is holding us up. Our consultant.
How can, hey, Carters? What is it? Because everybody else has a quiet zone. I don't hear in Ackworth. I don't hear in Roswell, Georgia. So why is it here? Why, why does CSX hate us?
It just takes time to work through their.
I just can't believe it takes, I've been here twenty years, and I just can't believe it takes this long. I'm sorry.
It hasn't taken that long because we never had the funding for it until the twenty-twenty SPOSS.
I just saw y'all spend twenty million dollars in five minutes.
That's, that's an overall budget, but again, we didn't have the money. It's estimated a half million dollars per crossing, and we took it the final numbers from CSX and the engineering costs, but the SPOSS, the twenty-twenty SPOSS approved by the voters has money allocated in there. We don't, until we collect that money, and we've collected.
Dan, I've heard SPOSS funds till I'm blue in the face. I'm sixty-four now, and hell, I'm going to die before y'all get a quiet zone in this town. I, it needs a hotel in this town, boutique hotel. I'm looking to invest in some, in some townhouses. Nobody wants to hear these goddamn trains honk their horns. Why do we, as much money as we have? Why are we still sitting here, well, I got to wait about this? I, I just don't believe it. I don't believe it's important to you, and I don't believe you understand how important it is to the growth of this town and this community that you quiet this town down and make it a nicer place to live. I don't want to hear the trucks coming through here. I don't want to hear the rednecks with their trucks. I don't want to hear the thumping music. Why do we have to live with it? I live here. I live on West Avenue, right there. Why do I have to listen to all this? I've had enough, man. I've spent thirty million dollars in this town. And I, I'm, I need an answer, and I don't need SPOSS funds. I don't need to have the money. Y'all need to be held accountable to quieting this town, and I'm sorry I'm upset. And he's a friend of mine, and I've known him forever, but I'm telling you, this is, without saying bad management, it's enough. It's enough. Y'all need to make that a priority. This town deserves better than that. We don't need the trains stopping on the tracks that keeps all these businesses from doing business. People can't get across. They're stuck. You got, I understand the trucks. They're going to go away when we get the bypass done. I get all that. I've been there twenty years. I've been hearing about this. I, I mean, I've spent so much money in this town, and I, and I just can't figure out why they still honk the horns. I hear it every night. Guess what? It doesn't bother me at night, but it bothers me for my businesses. And I want to invest more money. I'm not going to do it until y'all get that fixed. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sitting here with a, willing to make a lot of investments, and I can't do it because I live in donkey land with all these trucks and trains and music and stuff going on that doesn't need to happen in a downtown. It just simply doesn't need to be here.
I understand your concerns.
And I'm emotional, and I'm sorry, but.
Again, I understand your concerns, and I am pushing to try to get it done, but if we can only go, CSX is dealing worse than the federal government.
I ran a billion dollar, a billion dollar company, and I'm telling you, I'm just not going to accept that answer. You can do better than that.
Again, I'm pushing as much as I can to get it done.
I respect you, and I don't mean to disrespect you, but I'm sorry, enough's enough.
Because David, didn't we, we came out of visiting. We have a new noise ordinance, right?
It's not enforced.
We do. We made some changes within the past couple of months of the noise ordinance.
Yes, we do.
That's, that's separate from.
I mean, obviously, we're, we're not moving at the pace you want us to be.
When I'm saying send by a bunch of new trucks, why don't you buy some overshop cops in here and give that here and start giving tickets for three hundred dollars a ticket, and then you'll pay for all those trucks you're trying to buy. I mean, Rome does. Now I have this problem in Rome. I have a place right downtown, Rome.
Well, I'm saying, we've just now gotten the ordinance, so. And then I, I will say Diane Tate pushed it and pushed it and pushed it in regards to the quiet zone. The Stephen Schumacher from the CDB was here earlier and did an introduction, and he's, we're talking about hotels downtown, and obviously, he wants one more here than anybody. And the quiet zone is the one that I, me and him were talking, and, you know, again, I don't have the specifics, and obviously, Dan does, but I mean, it's coming, and it's obviously not on your timeline, but it's coming.
Jase, come on, man. You know how long I've heard it's coming? Jesus, y'all are better than that.
Well.
Y'all, y'all are better than that. Y'all are spending money like a, I just saw it. Y'all spend money like a, like crazy people. And you can't spend five hundred thousand dollars on free access to quiet this town down that the whole place would enjoy it?
I'm telling you, it's coming.
That's just not an acceptable answer. I'd fire you if you worked for my company and gave me that answer. That's not an acceptable answer today.
Well, I mean, we can get the details for you.
I'd like to see them. I'd like to see hardcore details, hardcore details of when it's going to be done. What, I, I've heard SPOSS show I'm dead in the face. I started my company here in nineteen ninety-five.
Well, the funds are, the funds are here. It's the, it's the planning and the engineering through CSX. That's what you just said.
Little Redneck Roswell, Georgia, get it done. We can't get it done.
Well, I mean, if you went and talked to them about their timeline, it might have taken them eight years to get it done. We just started.
But why didn't you just start? Jase, I've heard about this for twenty years.
I know. What I'm saying is, we just got the funding.
You've been talking about, and I was bombarded when I started talking about this.
We should have come in here and done that then.
We wouldn't have done it good if we had the same runway out right now.
No, I'm telling you, it's coming. It's, we, we're doing, we're, we're in the process.
I got some dates. Why don't we give the newspapers some hard dates?
Well, we'll get the details to you.
Don't give it to me. Give it to everybody in the city. We'd all like to have it.
James is in the back corner.
I'll, I'll get updated information, and I'll be glad to share that. I get, we're pushing it.
Thank you. I'd like to have it. If you got it, I'd like to get it by next week.
All right, I'll be glad to get you.
I mean, I've been kind and gentle and nice and spent a bunch of money and just, but we kept spending money based on the fact that it's coming, it's coming. I'm tired of that. We're better than that.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Thank you for your strong comments. And I think we all value your sentiments and feel the same pain you feel, and we all look moving forward with this, but dealing with CSX is a different animal, but hopefully you will see some progress that will satisfy you.
Well, I'll see if I can help you. I know this is big with CSX. I'll see you later.
That'd be great.
Are there any more comments? If not, there's a motion to adjourn.
Tell me.
All in favor? Thank you for your comment.